All right, very good. We're gonna get this workshop started. Commissioner Gibbons is certainly getting his heat worked on. It must have been some type of emergency because he's been there, I think, all morning. And Commissioner Byer will be walking in any minute. He's got the basketball camp this week. And I have to say that Commissioner Byer gets his, takes a vacation week and spends down there at the community center and teaches a lot of kids how to play basketball. So my hat's off to him. For today, we've got a couple of things. We've got one item on the workshop today, and then we've got a couple of other things that I'd like to bring up also. But Singerly Fire Company, Steve Orr and Sam Goldwater is here, and they're gonna give us kind of an update with Singerly Fire Company. I can tell the board I've been in contact with these guys. I'm worrying more about the fire company. I'm waiting for them to give me an honorary membership or something. But I've learned so much about the fire company over the last, probably last year, than I have known my whole life with Singerly Fire Company. And I think it's important for all of us to understand these things as we move forward. So guys, the floor is yours if you'd like to kind of give us an update where we're at. And then I know we had a couple of things that we want to discuss afterwards.
Okay. Thanks, Commissioner Gibbons, Mayor, Commissioner, and everyone for having us here today. This is absolutely an opportunity for us to share with you. You know, Singerly Fire Company, we're a nonprofit, we're called a blended organization. Full-time paid people, part-time paid people, obviously volunteers, volunteer management for sure. We're your fire, your fire department. It's what we do. We've picked a lot of pride in what we do. We obviously are ready to respond to calls and notice notice oftentimes during family reunions, Christmas time, middle of the night, that's what, you know, what we make sure that we fire ourselves enjoying. We spend a lot of time, whether we're folks that are paid or volunteer, we all spend our own time to train and learn those current techniques and get the best equipment that we can to provide services to citizens of Elton. So we like to say that when we're available on notice notice, and your call, no matter what it is, is our call. So we respond, respond to you.
You want to start with? So we've got a couple of things we'd like to talk about today. And one is just to build a relationship between the fire department and the town. Unlike a lot of other fire departments in other towns, we're not actually a department of the town, but we function that way. And we support the responsibility of the town, provide emergency services. The town is relieved basically of that responsibility because we've taken it on to do. And that has changed over the years. We talked about that a little bit as we go. When we talked about the history of the fire department. Then we're gonna talk about what we do today and how we do it. Then we're gonna talk about the future of fire and EMS, emergency medical services in the town of Elton. And we're gonna talk about some economic issues, where we get our money, how we spend our money. And hopefully get a lot of input from you on how we can move forward. So the fire department was started in 1892, the sheltering incident. And the fire department was run by the town. And in 1892, the town decided they needed a more organized approach to fight fires. There were several major fires in the town of Elton. In fact, on the corner of Main and North Street, there was a very large building there that burned down. And so all the townspeople would volunteer when there was an emergency. But there was no organized fire department. All the equipment belonged to the town. But there was no fire station. That equipment was spread around town, people's garages and barns and so forth around town. So that's how fire protection was done prior to 1892. So after those big fires in 1892, the town said, we need to organize ourselves to fight these fires because it's just totally unorganized. And Singerly Fire Company was invented. It's named Singerly Fire Company because one of the town industrialists, William Singerly, gave a hundred dollars to help start the fire department.
Why?
The equipment was already owned by the town. And so he gave that to get, to get the thing to go. And it went that way all the way up until 1949, the town owned the equipment. All the volunteers had to do was volunteer at the time. And 1949, the fire department moved from Main and North, beyond High and North. That building was owned by the volunteer fire department. However, it was built on government land. And it was that way moving forward where the equipment belonged to volunteers at that point. Volunteers volunteered their time. There was a stipend of money that the town gave, which was part of their town charter. However, that amount of money wasn't ever near enough to run the fire department. So the volunteers did bake sales and weddings and all those types of things. And the fire department was truly the center of the town, all the way up until the 70s. And all the way through, from 1892 all the way through the mid 70s, the fire chief was actually approved by this organization right here. So they would have their election, they would bring a slate to the, to the town, the town would approve that. And that would become, would become the fire chief and all the officers for that following year. Well, around 1975, the fire department brought that list to the town. They said, you know what? We're just rubber stamping this every year. Don't even bother coming back here. Well, from 1975 to two years ago, that was the last conversation the fire department had with the town. And so at this level. And so we kept getting further and further apart. And to the point where you people, I didn't say that, well, you people really didn't know what was going on with the fire department, just we cut all communications off. And the 70s up until 2000, that worked okay. We didn't really need a lot of help from the town, other than the charter funding that we got. But in around 2000, we started getting more calls than we could handle. And to the point where Newark was having to cover us so much, they came and met with Singerly and said, we're not coming anymore. And whoa, whoa, wait a minute. Chesapeake City could handle their number of emergencies with the volunteers they had. But when you throw on the calls from Chesapeake City to come to help Elton, they were going into the red. The same thing was happening in Northeast, the same thing was happening in Rising Sun. But the biggest one was Newark because they had already started a paid fire department in Newark. Combination volunteers and paid. And they said, we're not hiring more people to cover your calls. And in fact, we're not coming. And so it put Singerly in, in an emergency mode. But we really didn't have any dialogue on the town. You guys didn't even know that.
Sam, when did that happen?
Around 2000.
Oh, I'm sorry you didn't say that.
And so in 2001, we started hiring firefighters paid for by the volunteers. And we've been doing it that way. We've got, Steve will go over the numbers later on. And that's been growing and growing and growing. And to where in 2000, the paid personnel were supporting the volunteers. Now the volunteers are supporting the payers. It's completely flipped. And, and what that means is the funding is going that way as well. So now we're in a position where we can longer fund what needs to be done. And so, and we'll get into more detail as we go along here. But one of the things we would like, not only to create awareness with your team, but also some brainstorming on how we're gonna deal with this going forward. If you look on a nationwide basis, the American Volunteer Fire Service is collapsed. In 1970, Pennsylvania had 300,000 volunteer firefighters. Today, it's less than 38,000. And that's indicative of the system that we're in all over the country. And it's happening here in Cecil County and Elton as well. The number of people who have time to volunteer, the number of people who are inclined to volunteer even if they have the time. And then also the amount of requirements put on the volunteers. I started in 1971, and to be an EMP with 81 hours of training to be an EMP. And today, it's over 200 hours. Well, volunteers have here. Yeah. So today, volunteers have a hard time giving up 200 hours just for one training. That's just to do the medical part. Then you got the fire fighting part as well. So that's pushing volunteers away. And so we're getting fewer volunteers. Back in 1949, all the volunteers live within 10 blocks of where we're sitting right now. Our volunteers now live all the way out Glen Farms, all the way down Old Field Point Road. Some of them live in Delaware. And so they, they can't even run down the street, volunteer when the alarm goes off. And you've probably noticed for the last 25 years, the siren hasn't blown in Elton because it was blowing so much that the public said, that's enough. And so we had to go electronically notify our people because of volume of calls. When I started in 1971, we were running about 1,200 calls, 800 ambulance calls, and the rest fire calls. We're gonna be over 7,000 calls. And so not only do we have more calls, but we have less volunteers responding. So, and we'll get into more detail. Hopefully you'll have questions that we'll be able to answer as we go. So.
All right, we'll do the next one. So today, we talked about just before, it seems like throughout the year, we're now at our 130th year. Usually there's about 30 active people, 30 to 50 to get in contact. That includes showing the stuff we're doing administratively, working on fundraising, fire, EMS. That's pretty much what it is. Our entire district that we cover, including the outskirts and the county, our 89 square miles, about 54,000 people, fire tactics. And obviously, one of our stations is in Perry, Elton, primarily where we operate. And majority of our response is in the town of Elton. Key point there is we currently have 21 units soon to be deployed. But that's even less than what we had in 1975 due to the overwhelming cost of engines. Right now, our expenditures are around 3.3 million. We'll do the next one. So I say this, this is the 80/20 rule, not either way, but it's what's happening. While the incorporated town of Elton is only 20% of our district responding, 64% converts of the calls are within the city limits of Elton. And that's, that's our priority, obviously. Next slide. So Sam has mentioned 7,000. This year, we're on track. We've had, as of in June, 3,000 ambulance calls. And usually 1,500 rescue and fire rescue, or rescue most of the time is a vehicle, not a vehicle. Next slide. Other things that we do, we have outreach programs for fire prevention. Actually, next week, we're gonna have a, we group it safety week. But we're in contact with a lot of community, you know, community. And post-COVID, we're excited to get people back in, in the halls, physical people. I think everybody waved and now it's all crazy and stuff. Next slide. Currently, we have 17 full-time people. There's actually one who'll start getting lost at 117 full-time. We started the year with 15. We've added two more lieutenants. We had two lieutenants, but we realized we didn't have 24/7 coverage of leadership, meaning from the paid side. So we've increased that to two more lieutenants. We have 25 part-time paid people who fill in, take different shifts for holidays and set and vacation and what have you. Believe it or not, it's hard to even get volunteers, some are part-timers. Typically, this just seems to be a, we work in town, a lot of your part-time or full-time at another station, Newark, Rising Sun, or wherever. So there's a lot of cross-pollination of people, but it's tough to, to find. And as Sam mentioned, departments for training and all that.
And the other thing that's happening too in that light is a lot of our part-time personnel, we're firefighters in Baltimore County, Baltimore City, Hartford County. And their pay scales have been going up and up and up. And so if you're a career person in Baltimore County, and you're gonna pick up, you know, what's the best thing you can do as a part-time job? Is be a firefighter as well. Well, they can't come across the Susquehanna River in a lot of cases because they can make more money on the south side of that river. So.
Or east going to pass.
So it's becoming more and more difficult for us to be recruited, a part-time career person.
So as you see, I mean, it's definitely heavily related with, with paid people managed by volunteers retired. Next slide. So this is a very significant slide. If you look at it, we by far compared with the other towns in the districts. Because each town is just, you know, responding within their town, responding within the territory. These are how all the calls stack up. And in particular, we, Sam ran out of slide here. It's actually over 7,000. But you can see that just within the town of Elton, we're double the entire district of the closest person, or but closest town in S-4. That's, we didn't twice under, see that until we put that slide together. You experienced it, okay? It's significant. Next slide. So right now, we are, as we're projecting this year, 6,000 probably active over for EMS calls and rolling each year. Our total calls right now average anywhere between 20, 25 or something like that. And that's a combination of EMS, fire and rescue calls.
Per day?
Per day.
Yeah, per day. And if you overlay that clock, because we don't get a lot of calls from 2:00 in the morning to 4:00 in the morning. That means those calls are thrown on top. So we end up with lots of multiple calls. So hence we have four ambulances.
Soon to be five.
Soon to be five. And even with five, we'll run out because they'll all be out of calls.
So we definitely fill the ramp up there, especially with EMS. But not, this is showing the fire and rescue. It tends to be constant. But there again, the more, more population and birth that we hope to see Elton attain and sustain, you're gonna definitely see this go on too. Same reason, in the past week or so. Fire. Every day, sometimes the same place. I couldn't get my clothes. So I think, Brian? Arms is, I was small. And when it goes off, you don't wait. Not only are taking resources and applying them towards something, ultimately, I'd say 99% of the time proves to not be a call or needed, but we still got, it's also draining our resources and trying to, you know, risking the lives of people.
The other thing, you know, as, as local government, you have a better understanding than most people we show this information to. The population hasn't changed with that, with that red arrow. And so our, our calls for service are, have quadrupled since 1984. But the population really hasn't changed, or is relatively small in the town. And so more people are calling us for services. And we talked earlier, you know, before the official meeting started about, you know, the nursing homes. Well, they're, they're a really good economic development thing for the town. But they're really tough on impact to our service.
Yeah, one night last week, we, one, two, three, just one private drive within four or five hours of five calls. Five different calls.
What were they, medical calls?
Well, they all come in as medical calls. And I'm not gonna vouch for the emergency or not because I treat everything like that.
Right. And I don't want to interrupt you because.
No, shut up.
Are you guys talking about that? You know, these nursing homes and senior housing places? If there's a workable solution, you mentioned.
Yeah, I think that that's something I want to get involved with, and we'll, we'll start scheduling those meetings. Because my understanding is that every one of those nursing homes has a budget of transportation from point A to point B. But I believe that they're calling the fire company or using 911. In a lot of cases, it's transport and/or help. Given the example, a person falls out of bed, that's supposed to be done by the staff at the center. But they're calling Singerly Fire Company and ask them to help them put a person back in bed.
And in addition to us, the Department of Emergency Services, D-S, their medics respond to.
That means that medic, that ambulance is now not available for a critical care patient.
Not to say this or not.
Well, guys, you know, when we met with you a month or two ago for a firehouse, we went over this and discovered that they were doing that. So are they being charged? Do you get compensated by the nursing home?
Typically, what their response will be, I'm sure we'll hear this one, is that, well, our patients are Medicare, Medicaid. So you get paid on that. That's true. Provided one, it's medically necessary. Sometimes, probably more times than not, Medicare kicks back some of these charges and says they're not medically necessary. Based on, the people that write the reports will have to be thoroughly honest and put exactly what happened. And they get reviewed and have that number all the time. I'm actually, that wasn't really necessarily. That's one aspect. But where, by the way, most of our funding for ambulance calls, 90, 90 something percent comes from the Medicare and Medicaid. And I think Union's all the same, people, their patients, you know, a lot of people who are struggling in this situation. But the interesting thing is, if you take, if you take out the costs just for the fire site and main cost to provide EMS service, we still need the buildings and all the facilities. Our average cost for a call is 520 hours, based on last year's numbers. So we get paid usually.
As Medicare involves your.
Medicare, we usually get paid around anywhere between 2 something to 300 dollars for a call. Medicaid's $100. It was legislation at State House last year, here for this year, that they were trying to raise that. So as you see, it doesn't always cover it. So that's where we need support as we get from the county and the town to, you know, complement that cost of that we're seeing there. But, so when they say that they're paying, but to answer your question, are, are the individuals, corporations paying? Per patient? And we bill per patient?
Where around that?
Well, I know, for example, Medicare, where our regulations are, we build, depends on if it's BLS or Advanced Life Support. It's in with the, say, 900 to 1,000 dollars, that whatever you get from Medicare, you have to accept that and can't build a difference. So right there, you're, you're kind of on per.
Well, that's definitely gonna be a big discussion.
Yeah, I mean, and by the way, this is, this is all.
So these, these responses they make, they're costing you 500 something dollars per response.
Yeah, I, I, I'm just simple math. I took last year's audit report, pulled out the fire site, just the remaining, all the other expenses EMS associated, and divided into a number of calls, which was last year's 4,922 EMS calls.
I'm trying to wrap my head around where the 500 something dollars goes to. There's staff, gasoline.
Oh, it's, yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna.
Yeah, because it's right now, yeah. Because honestly, you still need to have all, all those things, the equipment, supplies, the real estate, support, salaries, as I mentioned earlier. That's because we're in, and they're going up. We're dealing salaries right down to places competitive forces who are losing people or not being able to hire people due to some.
That's true. We compete with the dollars for salaries. We're not, we're not overpaying.
That's, I was gonna ask about you. So next slide.
Saltwater.
Town of Elton water.
That's probably good. Next slide.
So back to some of the costs, good question. This is just some examples we pulled out. I just gave you talking about actually. $57,000 a year just for fuel. We get fuel delivered to us at our fuel box there. And it's all less sales, or you know, fuel tax, we get credit for that. So that's, that's bear a cost. Maintenance has been running around back to the point where we're actually very close to hiring a full-time mechanic. That's somebody that specializes in working on fire engines with the pumps, control pumps and the others. So we're hoping to do that, at least. One, one goal would be just to kind of freeze that cost in the calendar. Another would be to potentially reduce it because of the labor problem.
We have to take our vehicles sometimes to New Jersey, Washington DC area because there's so specialized equipment and nobody here could work on them. So that means it's gone for a week or sometimes, and they sometimes more than that, depending on what the problem is with the vehicle. So, and you have, the town has some specialized equipment. So if you kind of can relate to the most specialized equipment that you have and multiply that by 10, now you got a fire truck.
So I think just some of the cost associated with equipment, insurance, that portion related to the fire engines. Next slide. And just, you know, regardless of whether we're providing fires or answering EMS calls, we have utilities, we have 34, we have janitorial, snow removal, security, building maintenance. Yeah, it usually runs about a quarter of the year. Some years we have, like last year, we do take advantage during the pandemic when we shut down the building. We had no fundraising for March until it was past April. We had additional repairs in the hall and floor and apartment rods and that stuff. It varies, but usually it's gonna run about 150 a year. Next slide, please.
So one of the questions is that we get all the time is why do you have so many vehicles? The vehicles we have and the types of vehicles that we have, number of vehicles we have are all based on risk. And so we identify what the risk is, and then what does it take to mitigate that risk with people and equipment? And that's how we determine what we have. So we weren't able to say, for example, well, we're getting more calls and we got fewer volunteers, so we'll just handle what we got with volunteers that we have. We don't have that luxury. The calls still have to be handled, and it takes so many people to do certain things. So we had, that's why we had to hire people to fill that gap. Same thing happens with the vehicles. You need certain vehicles to do certain firefighting functions. You need specialized vehicles for emergency medical care. And, and we do have the top-of-the-line best stuff. Because that's what it takes. We're, we're a worst-case scenario business. So we can't say, well, we'll just buy the cheapie one. And when the big thing happens, when, you know, the disability catches on fire, we just won't deal with that. So we had to deal with turmoil. We had to deal with Union Hospital. We had to deal with the Main Street potential catastrophic event that would happen if you had a major fire on Main Street, which has happened, you know, in the past. We ended up burning more than one building down. We had a major fire up by the post office. I don't know if you remember that fire. We did an incredible job stopping that. Would, would have taken an entire block out.
I think it was the old versus.
Yeah, the old restaurants. And so we identify the risk, and then we get the equipment and the personnel to match that. So for example, we don't spend a lot of time on high-rise buildings, high-rise, I mean, more than six stories. Whereas other departments might because they have that in their risk basket. But we do have a. But we do have a railroad, we do have an interstate, we do have U S forty, we do have, uh.
Waterways.
Waterways. We have, we have, we are, we are in the, we are in the path, flight pattern for both Baltimore and Philadelphia. And we've had major, uh, penny crashes here in the past. So we we had to gear ourselves to what our risk is. And so that's why we have the equipment that we have.
Next slide.
The personnel equipment and all the these things that aren't the big shiny fire trucks. Here's some examples of what those costs are. So it costs about sixteen thousand dollars to outfit a single firefighter. That number is going to double probably within the next twenty-four months. Because F P A, which is based out of Boston, they're the ones that set the requirements for firefighters and fire departments. And they're going to require two sets of everything for every firefighter. And this is linked back to high cancer risk of firefighters. So with one set of gears being clean, you gotta have another set of gear and each person has to have their own set of stuff. And it used to be many years ago where we shared things. You can't do that anymore. And.
Two hundred and fifty. Same on pump with that next week. So we, all of us in the room, we were at the same fast.
And now everybody has their own man. So that's.
We didn't change the rules.
And it's all based on the rules. So if you say, okay, well, you have thirty active firefighters, fifty if you really stretch it to guys like Steve and I. Now you're talking just an outfit firefighter, that's a broken balance.
That's a, that's an amazing statistic. Quite frankly, you really don't think of that number, but it's 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 a big number.
Yeah, it was like the president's hat and treasurer's hat. I haven't done that job. I I don't like to sell that a lot.
But you have to have it. So if you have, if you bring in a new person, you're at thirty-two thousand dollars even before they start. Now, there's not many businesses out there today that have to pay upfront thirty-two thousand dollars to.
For a new hire.
For a new hire.
And that's, that's primarily on the fire side, even on the E M S side. It's it's probably in the neighborhood of six, seven thousand dollars.
Keep in mind, he's probably aren't even aware, all of our E M S personnel were body armor.
We spent like fifty thousand dollars.
Those are, those are personalized garments. That body armor.
Are there any ranches up you guys apply for? Maybe if you know.
One of the things we want to help the town on is we don't have the bandwidth or the talent to go after.
We try for here.
But don't you have to do it?
So we do, we do get some, we did get some, but we have to help support that. But not, it's usually like fifty percent, something like that, better than nothing, for sure. But there are bigger, bigger opportunities out there, as Sam said.
I think there's probably some synergy with E P D, for example, where there's, uh, grants that they can't go after because they're not doing what we're doing and there's grants that we can't go after because we're not doing what they're doing. But combined, there may be some grant money available, for example. For example, we need a fifth ambulance. Well, maybe it should be an armored ambulance, that you you got a grant and get a free one. And that would be our fifth one. And, you know, uh, so I I think collectively, those are the kinds of things that we're hoping to create dialogue and and thought process between, uh, this group and all the departments within the town. Uh, you know, how, where that synergy can come from.
Currently, our grant writer and still installing on our cabinet, through your cabinet. And we want that person to be relevant and like keep them out of our office. We've had success like the video order terminal grants that the county gives out each year. Uh, we definitely show you here in a moment some of the funding we got because of COVID situation.
We've done some state grants for fire prevention activities, uh, which is, uh, which we do a lot of. We 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 do apply for and we do receive grants, but it's insignificant in our.
So far. Next slide, please.
So when we're talking about how many firefighters we we, that's also risk driven. But if you if you look at national averages, it's between two point five, three point five firefighters per thousand residents. So for us, that equates to one hundred thirty-five firefighters or forty-five firefighters per twenty-four hour shift. And if you, if you, and that's where our entire territory.
Well, that's also important that if we say the entire operation is controlled by the town or city, that's what you're going to expect it really. You don't have time to union until you will.
Yeah, and so just for the town alone, the population of the town, we require between forty to fifty-six firefighters per shift.
Next slide, please.
There's another measuring stick that impacts fire departments and it's, it's called I S O, it's Insurance Service Offices. And they're the ones that set your fire insurance, or they supply data to insurance companies that then assess how much you pay for your fire insurance, for your business and for your residents. And so a lot of what we do is driven by that organization and we were just evaluated, uh, about eighteen months ago and scored extremely well. But that organization requires us to have four engines and soon to be six between the three stations, the long and two areas. Uh, we had one aerial and we have since purchased a used one, just so we can meet that requirement. Because if we don't meet that requirement, you as individuals, insurance will go up.
In a typical corporation.
And it doesn't affect residential as much as it does business engine. Uh, because they pay a lot more insurance than the business.
Next slide. So this is just to give you an idea of some of the breakdown of equipment. We, uh, this year, we have an engine on order right now, it's going to come in December, it's gonna, it's gonna probably be, well, the actual cost is seven hundred thousand by the time we quit the unit, all the cars, all the apparatus that's necessary, it's gonna, it's gonna be a thousand, for sure. Ambulances, we just ordered last week, another ambulance, the county, uh, there's a list and it rotates throughout the entire county, the county. We, last year, the county did not hold front of this, so we missed an ambulance. We should have another one ordered this year to support those calls.
You know, I'd like to make one real quick comment. So that's the pecking order from all the fire companies throughout the whole system. And yet Singer Lee is doing fifty percent of the counting, going back to that slide in here. So that even includes Hacks Point, who has like one call a month.
Eighty-three calls a year.
And and we're part of the, excuse me, fire association. We support the county association, all of them say, so we we comply. Uh, but you're right, it's it doesn't.
We're we're in the same rotation as Hacks Point to get a new.
Right, and everybody else. And, uh, but we just, we just ordered the ambulance, uh, this entered into contract, we had to get them before July first in in the cost, so that'll, it'll take some time, it'll be around this time next year, sure. And the county is looking at the possibility of taking some of their COVID money towards, when I say funding, what they do is the county is agreed in case of an engine to, if you approve, three hundred and twenty-five thousand towards an engine. So for example, that engine is coming in, uh, the eight hundred thousand, we'll have to pick up four hundred and fifty for finance, which we probably do for part of the money, some of it. Uh, the ambulance, uh, they, for ambulance, the county pays a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So that usually needs anywhere between two fifty and two seventy-five, depending on what, what we found here in the last few years. We have to equip our ambulances with variaticres, for, uh, folks that are overweight and, uh, we have had large numbers called. It it seems that a lot of them, somebody's fallen or have to actually load them up, ambulance is quite a special player. Uh, but that's just an ideal way of costing, why some of these, next slide, please.
You can go on, as I was talking in front of Dennis, I was listening to you talk about vehicles. How many vehicles do you all have total?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one total. You were the only one I started in the fire. Okay.
So just to give you an idea of the animal expenses, we mentioned, this is last year, uh, right out of the audit report. Uh, the biggest thing you can see by far is our payroll. It says firefighter payroll, but it's just payroll, firefighting plus E M S. Um, most of the, the priority is the insurance, to get the insurance. Not that the fire is not, but we we definitely make sure that all of our employees are keeping riding the campus. Capital acquisitions in twenty twenty, we did buy another engine around here. We had two, uh, uh, you know, the lost some of the vehicles and also we refurbished our anger, which, uh, doesn't do a lot in townings, for sure, than private pilots. But, uh, those, those costs then were between five and six hundred thousand dollars, we were able to do that for a hundred thousand, so that's.
We figure we'll get another twenty years. Which means, which means it'll be forty years old.
Our fund drive, our fund drive, uh, usually, what that is, we we contract with a corporate corporation that mails out the fund drive for us, takes care of arranging it. We just track through, we get the donations from and feed that back to them. Last year, we did have to cut back on our events, so that that twenty-five thousand is already this year, just in two or three months, we can back in operations, already about forty thousand. Just to provide the starting, that's been go over. Yes, we did come back this year, we made a little money on that. But that that's a good ideal, just all the different things that we we have to pay for. So there's some opportunities there, maybe to partner, uh, with with the town, if I could say, we can do, do so. Overall, it's pretty much probably remain clean. Back on the salary, I said, we had two tenants, they're actually going to be fully occupied. And with some of the things we don't have to do competitive with our payroll, next year, we're expecting that to be one point four. Currently, our our income, if you do this slide, uh, runs for the ambulance, that's the big amount of money that we get. Uh, it's about one point three. So it has, we've been pretty successful over the past, say, ten years, so at least I've been involved watching the number, uh, that the buildings are paying for payroll. However, we we have a strong feeling right facing now where it could be upside down a little bit. Uh, next obviously is the county appropriation, which is over and around, and it's not been over that yet. And then the town's money, uh, between the, uh, property assessment and the five oh eight month, it's running a hundred and forty some thousand. Fund drive next year, we did three fund drives and I don't know if it's because of COVID and people really supported us, but I thankfully, we, uh, we went about probably a thousand higher than loans. Or try again this year, you know, people get tired sometimes of receiving things in the mail, the money, it does help all say. But that that's pretty much it. As you can see, our number is very similar between expenses and revenue right now. Uh, dividends, sometimes, you know, we we are a sophomore or pulling back previously, uh, People's Bank funding. And, uh, it's, it varies with the market. It's usually about a million, roughly a couple hundred thousand here or there. But each year, we can pretty much count on about seventy thousand dollar dividend. So it's reasonable. And the way the, the way the buy laws and companies suck right now, it would take seventy-five percent of the members to be present for a meeting, seventy-five percent of the members to vote in favor of selling it anyway. That that's even, we have a couple companies being one or two shares, they would also be game, so that's. But it does, it does provide solvency, of course. That's not something that I really wanted to dive experiences and funds from. Uh, next slide, please. So, uh, just, this is just where we are as of the end. We didn't have total lumber yet, uh, towards the end of the store, but probably has it this week, second quarter. But, uh, you can see it's still moving around along the, uh, the building for the first quarter. That's encouraged. If that continues, that's going to be over a million and a half. That could be, that would help. That's all. Sometimes in the beginning of the year, it's front, it's front letter too.
You get some carrier from the holiday.
Yeah, I don't know if that's why, Medicare does, you know, payments, does seem to ramp up basically. Uh, but as it, as it right now, we did, since the time we did this, we had, uh, you all come down and briefly accepted your, uh, town assessment, a hundred forty, a hundred forty-two thousand. And, uh, the county assessment usually comes in the last part of August or early September in eight oh, you know, five oh eight funding. Pounds, uh, money comes in in January, I believe you might have, you should get four thousand five hundred and fifty-five later, probably in December, we'll get the, the county five oh. All of which is very. Next slide. And the expenses, uh, this, as of the fourth. But you you'll have a copy, I can see it, you have a question here, now or later, I'll hesitate.
And if you'd like to see the Q two numbers, we'd be happy to share those with you as they come out.
Yes, definitely expect to see, uh, the next expenses to go up and also hopefully.
The other thing, uh, I think you'd be happy to know is we we have independent audit. And so we we get audited, uh, was it every third year, a full audit?
And then a review.
And then review every year by third party.
Next slide, please. So, uh, active, you know, here's, here's where we're at, where we're going. And the other real question is how are we going to feel like that? That's gonna, I'm gonna start hitting this next year, uh, thereafter. Next slide, please. Yeah, I'm making a curve there.
Those lines being separated is, uh, a recipe for disaster.
Okay, next slide. So. As an eighteen ninety-two, they're still building the same amount. We say active people come up purely volunteer. The numbers that I shared at the rear, folks, which is seventeen full-time and twenty-five part-time, as an addition to that, we add one of the books, three hundred members, but, uh, I don't recall in my category at all. There's fellows after God named this agent, someone, a fire doctor, Sam, just got re-certified. But, uh, it's, uh, it's predominantly a younger folks world and, uh, that's where our career staff comes in. But, um, yeah, the percentage, you know, obviously, as we've run the limits and some of the funding, we're in the same, stage wise, it's, it's actually less. And and when Sam was talking earlier about, just so you understand, when you are and other people were screaming about recovery for our calls, the county set up a, a lot of systems. So there's an alert, say, at the wall on Flashwood Road, or back in York, too. Uh, sometimes it'd be a, their station would actually closer down in town, all of the town, all these town apartments, uh, but it's, uh, it's all based on that. So you do get that support, however, uh, when it comes to the E M S, two, one of them there yesterday, that's where it's really coming. And then the county too, obviously, with the paramedic system they have, uh, it's, uh, we'll, we'll go out dry, we're on our medic, up at the back of the, back of the. That's, that's one of the things that I'll see a lot at this time of day is, um, we'll have a call to, say, rural. We'll go over there, also, it's the first call, like, within the hour, and if it's already back, they'll go out with two people. And meantime, man, it's actually on the floor. So, you know, not only are there, there's ambulance out, probably at that point, I'd only be with one person, obviously. But we have other folks coming in, driving the rescue truck, driving the engine, people going to the scene. A lot of our officers go to the scenes first, so they can grab a hold of what we actually need or the resources. It's an ability to turn off a lot with it coming in, right? But, uh, yeah, I mean, we we, uh, as you can see, we're at a point now where we're, we've got a lot of risks. I'll, I'll turn that over to you, Mr. Taylor, we'll, we'll do the cleanup.
Well, you know, uh, I I've certainly, uh, as I said earlier, I've learned so much about the inner workings of the of the fire company, which is, uh, you trust. And, uh, I know over the years, we probably didn't have to know all that much because we had members of the fire company that were on the board and I think that they were kind of the liaison. Today, that certainly has changed. I don't think anyone's, Junior, are you a member or no?
Sure.
Yeah, so we're probably the first board that's never had, really even, uh, uh, we call it the, uh, social member. Yeah, we're not even, uh, social members and, uh, I absolutely recognize that gap and I I recognize what our responsibility has to be for the residents of our town. And, uh, I I'm a believer in history. I understand that the town was very active for many years and, um, it looks like it may flip completely around for us and. it looks like it may flip completely around for us, and, um, we can't allow this ball to drop, and, and there's been a lot of things that's been going through my mind. Um, one is, maybe there's a way that we can, um, take the burden off some of the expenses. Uh, you know, we talked about, maybe we could figure out how we can get a joint grant writer. Maybe we can figure out how, um, I think in one discussion, you were talking about, you guys don't have an HR director, and you're at the point now that you might have to hire someone. Maybe, maybe there's a partnership that you're, we could be your HR, you know, I don't know how that works, right? But that could save forty or fifty thousand dollars. I don't know about healthcare and workman's comp, but maybe there's a way that, uh, without affecting us, because I know you guys are paying, or I say us, we are a team here. But maybe there's a way that we could work that, uh, to see how it would affect the, the big picture.
Just the benefits.
Yeah, just the benefits, and then the vehicle insurance, maybe there's a way that that can be included through our insurance, some, in some manner, to insure that equipment. Uh, so I've got a lot of things that, that I want to look at, and, and I've also thought about other methods to increase the revenue. I know without a doubt that the new, uh, uh, South Fields project in the town of Elton is going to probably close to double the amount of dollars that, um, based on the tax rate dollars, that'll be coming to Singerly. It won't be in two years or three years, but let's say four years, once it starts getting completely built out. The assessable, because you're based on assessable income, and I know that, uh, uh, we're going to go from like a one-point, two-billion-dollar assessable base to well over a two-billion-dollar assessable base in the town of Elton. Now, that's, that's my projections, not, uh, I haven't met with any accountant firm or anything like that, but it's hard for me to believe that we're doing a seven-hundred-million-dollar project over there as well as and gain some income from it.
But we also realize that with that, we're going to probably see how two fifty-three thousand calls here in that area.
That, that's correct.
That's what offset that whole.
And it does, and it does offset. So I'm trying to figure out how we can get additional revenue, and, uh, I think I'm going to ask the board that we figure out if we can get, uh, I don't know, I hate to even use the word studies, but we've got to figure out who we can get in here to help us do the math, but, you know, just quick math. If we were committed and we took, we had twenty-one hundred and sixty water bills a month, is what we had. We, we built twenty-one hundred and sixty, two thousand one hundred and sixty water bills a month. And if we were able to put a line item on that water bill, Singerly Fire Company, if it was twenty dollars, that's a half a million dollars in additional revenue that could come to the Singerly Fire Company, which I know based on these numbers, we feel that that would close next year's gap, and maybe the following year's gap until some of the other comes in. Now saying that, I don't know if that's the right method to do. I don't know if, I, I'm thinking in my mind, would I rather, as a taxpayer, have the additional um, charter change to increase that percentage to the fire company, to make that difference, because now it's a tax write-off on your, on your, uh, uh, real estate taxes. On your water bill, it's not really a tax write-off. It's, it's basically a fee that someone's paying in it, and the other challenge is, do you hit the residential folks for the twenty dollars, or do we go talk to our corporate sponsors? And maybe the corporate sponsor should be the ones paying a little bit more, I don't know.
I'd like to defer to, to your expertise in, in that, like, on, uh, how, how, how to respond to our needs, is you're better suited to make those decisions than we are. Uh, and, and, and certainly, we're, we'll support however it is that you want to help us and, and help the town.
I, I think that.
And there, there may be a, something we hadn't even thought of yet, I'm sure, I'm sure that's probably it.
So I'm just going out ideas, is all I'm doing, I'm not the.
No, I love it, I think all your ideas should be discussed.
But I think.
I think they should be mine ideas discussed.
Do we, you know, we take care of the public safety, when a lot of our charter is very clear, talks about, still with fire, uh, the safety of our residents, it's, it's included in our charter. And, uh, these are things that we have to take care of, and you guys have been doing a great job for many, many years, and you've taken a lot of burden off the, the town fathers and mothers for many, many years, and, uh, but I think we just need to come up, and, and I don't know if that means that we, should we get a committee together and start analyzing this a little bit, workshops? I'm not really sure where direction to go.
I think we should, um, we might ought to reach out to, um, MML too, and see what, yeah, the shells are going to be shaking her in here. She knows what we would get. Because then we always get pretty, pretty good directions sometimes, from tried and true.
Well, Sam, in addition to being our director of, uh, the government relations, community relationships, also got forty years' experience in the, uh, corporate funders, um, as a, as a career, so be at contacts around around the country, around the world.
I, I think, and the Association of County's, um, from Maryland, year before last, had a panel discussion , uh, in Ocean City, uh, on this subject, and I was on the panel. And so, uh, we're, we're deeply involved, not only locally, but, uh, certainly within the state and nationally on this subject, so we're, we're all in to help you help us.
I, I think, uh, I think you hit it right on, kind of on the head that first and foremost, Singerly is probably one of the finest fire companies in, out of a hundred and fifty-seven municipalities in the state of Maryland, there's no ifs, ands, or buts about that. There is a hundred and fifty-seven municipalities out there that, uh, a lot of them have been struggling, and they may be already working on trying to methods to, to try to make this happen, but a couple of things that you said during your presentation that really did hit home with me more so this time than it did in the past, is it that we need, we need to work on what our risk is in our town. And, uh, because, because I, I, I tell you, I, I get, there's been times over the years that they'll say, well, why do they need that ladder trouble? Or what do they need this for, what do they need that for? And, uh, I understand it, I think it just finally hit me that we have to, um, any risk that could happen in this town, we've got to be prepared for it.
And Maryland Emergency Management and FEMA, Federal Emergency Management, uh, both have programs for local government to deal with emergency management issues. And so, for example, you saw in the news as recently as this morning, uh, the collapsed building in Florida. That can happen here. And there is, during that emergency, and you saw the mayor of that town, she, I thought, has done a wonderful job of speaking to the public multiple times a day, um, so when those emergencies occur, you, you're going to be deeply involved in, and, uh, and there are programs to help you do that. And it just happened that, uh, when they had the, uh, the bombing in Oklahoma City, uh, it just happened that, uh, just a few weeks prior, the entire, uh, management team from Oklahoma City's government went to Amesburg, Maryland, and took a program to how, how to deal as your organizations, uh, with these kinds of emergencies. And so there are tools out there to reach out and get, and there are, uh, experts to deal on your side of the table, um, to help you do, uh, those kinds of things. And, uh, I think, uh, I, I think it would be relevant if we had a county-like, uh, local government workshop on how do you deal with these types of issues, and bring in some of the key players from, uh, from FEMA, from BIMA, uh, other, other cities who have had problems and want to deal with them. New York had a third-party, uh, company come in and evaluate their fire department. And they closed the fire station and moved all of that. And what they're going to have to build very quickly, as we call it, that's rough. But, you know, that wasn't even on the volunteers' minds, that, hey, these fire stations are too close together to do what you do. Let's close one here, and let's open one over here. Um, so all that's available, uh, to us, um, to, uh, to do. And I, I think, uh, is Lou still on?
Yeah, Lou, um, I mean.
He's probably involved in a lot of those kinds, or aware of a lot of those kinds of things, I'm sure.
All right, very good. Lou, do you have any, uh, questions or comments?
One of the things I like to ask the fire company, can you hear me?
Yes.
How, how do they, uh, train their people if they hire them? Are they already trained, the full-time equivalent people or part-timers? They have prior training, or do you send them, uh, to Baltimore or someplace for training?
They're, they're, we require a lot, a whole bunch of training before we hire them, and that's all done by the University of Maryland Fire Rescue Institute.
Okay.
And EMS side, it's, uh, BIMs, Maryland, uh, EMS.
But we also have genuinely trained ones to hire too, there's a lot of drills and, and company training.
And then, especially on the medical side, uh, there's a, we have a, a doctor that, uh, that we're responsible to, that allows us the authority to do the things that we do, so they have to get into that system, which they may be from a different county, uh.
But that, to answer your question, Lou, it's a requirement in, in the job description that they're either an EMT or a paramedic and trained in fire service.
Okay, thank you.
You also go through driver training to drive our vehicles.
One of the ones I wanted to answer, or talk about, is Lance, who, on the spin side, um, and it ties into what, uh, Mr. Hunter asked before related to grants, you'll see, like, in twenty twenty, we had, um, two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars of grants. If you look at that, that as revenue, those were one-time things, the big thing there was a hundred and sixty-one thousand of the paper protection programs, which as of right now, uh, they have converted all but six thousand to a grant, where I had to pay all six thousand, for some reason, it was six thousand, I don't know why. The other part was, uh, we got, we got grants from, uh, the Provider Protection Program, which is part of Medicare, fifty thousand. Uh, some of that, I actually have to go back, um, we got, um, also the county care money, we, we see that we were able to submit, uh, monthly expenses, weekly, actually, uh, to, through the Fire Association and the county, in fact, so, um, that kind of puts us back a little bit too, I know the town is, uh, at least, uh, what I, what I understand is, is, uh, hospital receiving, we're from thirteen, fifteen, they have, they have house packages. So, uh, we, we definitely like to, they are, they on the list for that, if you see a way to do that for us, uh, we, uh, especially if somebody, we may have to purchase in the next year or so, that would help out, so.
I think the other thing is, uh, on, on the side of the grants, uh, as you know, it takes an incredible amount of administration. So there's no free lunch, well, all of our administration is volunteers. So if it takes twenty hours to administrate that, that funding, that's twenty hours of somebody's volunteering to do that.
Where that paid captains in the industry.
And so. It's, there's a balancing act there too, and, uh, nobody. Nobody signs up to be a volunteer firefighter.
It's a right grant.
It's a right grant, or it's a minister.
Or to do what I'm doing somehow.
And it's a, it's a whole level of expertise that, uh, the person who's going to volunteer to be a firefighter or an ambulance person generally doesn't have. Um, and we don't get a lot of people who say, hey, I'm too old to go to fires, but I would like to volunteer to do some paperwork, people just don't call us up for this time.
So at some point, you'll have an administration staff that'll be a paid staff. It's going to happen, right?
Oh, yeah, I can see, I can see right now, you brought up issues, uh, discussions related to finances, uh, talk about HR, and just overall administration. I can see the old and ominous, and by the way, I can, I can only do most of it when I retire, and I actually retired a year early, just so I can think of.
Wow.
You know, I said a sacrifice, you know, I thought I got a very understanding way, but, uh, I, I think ultimately, yeah, it's going to require that level of support, uh, whether it's, uh, standalone support as an administrator, or, like you said earlier, possibly there's some services within the town and county that can oversee. But for example, when we first started with the career service in two thousand and one, the county was handing, handing the payroll three, four people. And maybe with part-time altogether, ten. I think that lasted two or three years, we started with contracting with the company out of New York, uh, three years ago. We contracted and now pages, but it's still required a lot of administration work on our side. Whereas if that's something that the town can help out on, it's not only less cost, but less, or drain of our resource, we go to pay it in.
Once you visualize EPD, I think it's probably a good balance there of how, how much does it take to administer that department within the town? And, and we're, we're doing all that amount of administration on our side, uh, as well, so, uh, even though we only have, uh, some thirty-odd career personnel, we're having to manage that on this side. And, uh, so that's, so we're doing that, then we're not going after those grants, because you guys have an hour.
Sounds like you need administrative centers here.
But we, we actually hired a full-time bookkeeper, well, say, full-time, part-time, twenty-four hours a week, bookkeeper slash administrative person. We did that four or five years ago, um, we, we had folks that were going, you know, going to checks and, you know, going to bank deposits. We currently have treasurer, assistant treasurer, but we also had a bookkeeper there, uh, now it's Tuesday, Thursday, or Thursday, it was Monday. Once the kids go back to school, probably more, uh, early development, it's a higher condition. Uh, but yeah, I mean, we, we decided, we decided we had to pay that person to do that.
Do they like keep track of everybody's hours and submit them to your payroll company?
Our, our currently, our career captain, the person that's in charge of career services is a volunteer, we call it career services coordinator. That person is now really trying to take a lot of that from that captain's position, because like I said, we want that person on, on the ambulance or the fire system. Yeah, it does get, it's instant, pulled back that way a lot of times, because stuff has to be done, uh, payroll has to be done, all the things in the ministry. I mean, it, it was not uncommon to see our career captain sitting in the boardroom, paying the benefits, you know, a lot of the bad. So we're, more and more, our career services coordinator, who's a volunteer, is doing that, and the, the typical person doing it right now works full-time, and they can achieve it tonight.
And a, and a lot of this is people-centric, so we have somebody who's willing to do it, number one, and able to do it, number two. But a year from now, that person may say, I'm done, I'm done, I'm not doing that anymore, and, and there may not be another person to step up and say, yeah, I'll do it.
Kind of the backfield sum.
Well, listen, very good.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Uh, thank you, guys, for coming to educate us.
You've learned something, I have.
Absolutely, I've got a lot of notes, and we're not going to let this ball drop. We're going to, uh, we're going to come to some type of, uh, conclusion or a work in progress, uh, conclusion's the wrong word. Um, we got to keep this thing moving in the right way.
Yeah, I mean, this, this is something that I think we're on top of, I feel confident right now, and if we continue the relationship and, you know, make smart decisions where necessary. My fire work and process improvement, I would sit, you know, work smarter, not harder, so we can definitely look at the opportunity there and make basis.
Perfect. And, and, well, we got a few other things I want to talk about on the agenda, you guys are welcome to stay or you can exit, if you want to listen, it's your call.
Thank you.
All right.
Sam just drove six hours of work.
All right, very good, there's a couple of things that I want to do, thank you, guys. Uh, a couple of things that I wanted to. A couple of things that I wanted to bring up. One uh, uh I wanted to. Hey Lou, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh how far along are we with, uh I know we're, it's only been on paper. But what do we need to do to get the South Street extension to the neighborhood community center?
We need to buy a lot of land.
Do we uh?
Yeah, Collins Street isn't good enough. You'd have to buy other land there. And some of the uh owners, we looked into that one time. There was a number of people involved and some of them are estates, uh gets a little complicated. I, I have a file on it that I retired it many years ago because of all the people involved in buying the land. And we didn't have uh, have a way of purchasing that land.
May, maybe we can get uh, maybe we can even get John's office to take a look at it when you get back. And see uh, uh who owns some of those. And I, I think we need to get, I, I think it would be great to have another entrance in here, unless of course feels otherwise.
No, actually that was in the plans many, many years ago. It fell on deaf ears. There was no intention here than that. That's one reason why a lot of people still on Collins Street who know that they cannot build on that property or still paying their taxes because they were told that, and, and I was told myself, and I think I realized that was supposed to, our road was supposed to go through there to connect with the street right here and also Blue Street. So maybe Lois needs to jog his memory because that was supposed to be real.
I think we can move forward with it.
Okay, when you, when you talk about moving forward with it, you're, sorry, we will need to authorize uh funds. We don't know, we don't have funds budgeted for the purchase of land. Uh that's the only thing. I don't, I don't have any money to work with on that.
But there's not worth a whole lot going down there, Lois. If you remember when you was policeman and you may not, those were small pieces of property. Even though it was a small piece of property, the houses probably include large families because that's what existed there on both sides of the road. And, and, and even um, well, Grace Church was given property, and Providence Church was given property by uh Lichtenberg because.
I, I know that uh Dwight Hare told me that he would donate uh this couple of parcels to the town that are down there. But you know, if we were able to get uh, if that COVID money from the state ever comes in, it can be used for infrastructure, correct?
I, I water and sewer I'm familiar with, but I'm not familiar with the construction of streets. But we could use highway user revenue for construction. We, we would have money for that or we could use that money for that.
See what properties are involved. Some of them were estates, they're not in estates anymore, those estates have been closed and we can figure out.
Okay, that'd be good. Lou, when you get back, we'll get uh, we'll dust that file off and we'll get John involved and we'll uh let him run with it. All right. They did. Absolutely, they did. Yeah, the high street.
What I like to make, I like to comment, I uh, what I'll have to do is get involved, an engineer involved because the engineer have to do the uh extension, lay out the extension, then I'll have to send it to the Board of Ed because part of their property will be affected uh where hooks up there. So um I, I'll have to get, have an engineer involved too because we can't design a road without engineering.
No, I think we all agree with that. I, I love the one drawing that we had in concept, which actually provided parking along by the uh, it was parking along the road uh from the barber shop all the way through. I mean, it was a really nice concept.
Yes.
Of whether it could work or not. Uh but that's, I, I, I think it would be go a long way. It would be. The next, I, what I also wanted to mention to the board uh that we have three vacancies on the historic committee. And uh please come up with a name for me or names uh that we can put on the historic committee. Brittany uh has, Brittany Schwartz has uh did not want to be renewed. And I think we had two vacancies, which I just found out about. So we've got three vacancies total and uh I just want to let the board know that uh these, these three uh important positions could kind of control whether on a lot of the decisions that are made in the historic district. If everyone understands where I'm at with that. Um and lastly, uh the house on High Street that we've been talking about demoing. Uh I spoke to John Downs this morning and he has said that uh, you know, I think we're invested in about $10,000. The county has said that they would waive um their fees, but there is money owed back to the estate uh with this purchase of this property, which is right at $25,000 or dollars. And um for us to move forward, we, we're gonna have to think about this with Lou, uh if you can hear me, that uh I'd like for you to get with John and get this all figured out, how we can move forward with that. Now, the good news of this is uh we know that Habitat for Humanity would buy this back from us or this lot or however it would work. Or if we wanted to sell it to another entity to rebuild a single-family house or whatever, we know, we feel pretty comfortable there. I don't think that we'll be out any money once it's all said and done. Uh but it's gonna cost a little money to get that building down.
Yeah, we paid 10,000 so far.
And that, that represents the actual taxes that we do at the time of the sale. So that, that was real money that, that the purchaser put up. That's what we repay them. They, they got their 10,000. And now what we have is basically the rights that, that they had. All we have to do at this point is report the deeds. My office would, would complete the deeds, report the deeds. And when, when those deeds are reported, that 25,000 is due there. We can get a precise breakdown, it may be, you know, plus or minus some change, but we're basically talking about 25,000. We would need to do two other things. One of them is demolish the property, demolish the buildings on it. And we estimate um about $10,000 for that. And then it would be uh, we would take this two, there are two lots, one building, one two lots, building kind of scrims and set up property on it. We would recombine th- those two properties, which does a couple of things. One of them is you're gonna put a single-family title on it and you're not gonna have a what's the, one of the properties side by side uh duplex. You don't have a, you don't have a duplex situation. So we end up with single-family residents, owner occupied. If you choose to go the route with Habitat for Humanity, the county's very excited about that possibility. And they waived a number of costs that would be associated with that. In fact, but, but it wouldn't, I would anticipate the county would have some skin in the game, the town would have some skin in the game. And Habitat for Humanity as well. If you chose not to go that route, we can still always sell the lot to, to somebody who wants to build on it. You're gonna get whatever access of 40,000 if you would have it. The only, the only speculation is that some of the fees that the, that the county's waiving, they're gonna want some, some participation in that, those fees too. Because they don't want to waive all their, all the fees and cost of taxes and all that stuff, only to have to sell it for a hundred thousand dollars property to.
What kind of fees? What fees are gonna be owed to the county?
Well, they, they're waiving other taxes that, that it's not getting paid.
Oh, other taxes.
Yeah. And so I, I, I've had extended conversations with Lawrence Scott, who's the county attorney. And they're very much in on this idea. But I don't think it's unreasonable that if, if the town represents, I don't mean intentionally do this, but if the town represents that we're gonna partnership with Habitat for Humanity and the county waives fees and costs. And then we end up selling it to the developer for, you know, significant profit, they're gonna say, wait a minute, we, we want, that wasn't the original deal. But I think they're gonna want to remember and have a understanding to address that. But there's no reason why the town should suck for a whole bunch of money. Uh we want to participate with Habitat for Humanity. Like I said, the county's waived, the town would have some skin in the game and Habitat for Humanity has some skin in the game. If we can figure that out, you don't really need to figure out that, you know, this whole plug itself commercially. Then we'll just have to sit down and put a rent again to the county.
Well, one time Chip had interests in the property right across the, not across the street beside it. Because he was talking about the Habitat for Humanity as well. As a matter of fact, he wanted to talk to the owner, maybe giving that property to the town. And then he would, you know, forego having to pay taxes on it because one side is just as bad as the other. But you'd have to see Chip about that because he, he spoke about that as well.
Chip and I had a Zoom conference call with Habitat for Humanity at 10 o'clock. Went about an hour, talked about all these multiple lots right there in that immediate area. Yeah, so there's, there's a number of them we may need to partner up on. It's just like, I'm beginning to think that perhaps the avenue that I found through tax sale uh may give us an opportunity to look at some other properties as well.
Like down.
Yes. Yes, maybe, maybe. Um and so I'd like to eat the elephant one bite at a time. But let's do this one, figure it out, you know, as we go through. And the town's got tons of skin in the game at the end of the day. Um and certainly nothing that you wouldn't have an opportunity to approve or disagree with. So, but I, I'd like to get the funding so that we can move forward on this one.
Perfect.
All right. I have one, uh not concern, but request. Louis, can you hear me?
Yes.
Community Center today, doing basketball camp, but I would like to get a large um clock, a regular clock, not score clock, in the uh community center, probably in the doorway as you come in. So in case somebody's running some kind of a program, kick in, at least know what time it is. I just noticed that today when I was in there and I thought it'd be a good thing to have into the uh community center. You guys can go figure out what would look good in there, just a regular clock, something visible that someone whoever's running some kind of program can at least see a time. Is that okay?
Yeah, I, I thought it was interesting when I walked in there with Earl, there is no clock. You don't even know what time it is in the uh.
I had to keep asking what time it was, so.
So if you are running programs in there uh, or if you're a parent and you're sitting in there and you know it's uh, you know, you don't have a clock, of course, everyone has cell phones today, but it does make a difference if you can look up and say, it's eight, it's 1:30.
I was thinking a good spot would be right in the center of your room, right as you come into the doorway. Just, just to be visible for someone to be able to look up and see.
The clock's in Mary's office. We have a clock, it's in Mary's office.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. And then just somewhere down the line, I know they were doing some outside programs. But I requested maybe a couple of tents for like the heat for the kids wanting out there playing. I don't, I don't want to make this too baby, but I know that it could cause a little problem if we leave tents just sitting up there. But for certain events and stuff when they're running some, some outside programs for the heat. Okay, so I'm, I'm not gonna say anything else after that.
All right, perfect. Anyone have any uh questions or comments?
I do.
Yes?
I do. I wanted to tell you, when we were at MML, Commissioner Massimiano and I had the occasion to stop at a booth from the town of Frederick. And the lady that was there, her name's Donna Goff, and apparently she's the economic director for the town. And she was real excited to hear from us because I guess we were sharing our flooding, you know, woes with her. But she reached out to me yesterday and um it says, Commissioner Burma, we met in Ocean City at the MML convention and I'm meeting with my director, Richard Griffin tomorrow, which is today, uh to go over which items are best to send you to represent the flood control project from the 1990s. So I'm kind of anxious and excited to see what she had to send them. And I know they'll be coming through, you know, in town, email or whatever, but I'm anxious to get that. And then coincidentally, um there was a student from Cecil Community College last year, right before COVID hit, that did a thesis on the flooding in Elton. And they had actually researched uh some information about Army Corps of Engineers in the town of Frederick. And they also did a study uh with, with residents on Facebook about what would you like to say, you know, to town. But um I don't know if, once we get this information from the town of Frederick, if I could convince uh maybe that student to come into a meeting one night and present her, her presentation um and see what type of information that um she has uh, or, or her mother, because I know her mother probably did the project. Take that off for her. So I mean, if you guys are open um for this, I would like to invite you to come in one night and then combine that with whatever we get from uh this Donna Goff. And, and just take a look at it. It may or may not be uh something for us, but I certainly would like to know that it's not before I.
It was very interesting what they did with their flooding problem down there. Very expensive.
Very expensive.
Very, very interesting.
Yeah, the reason I wanted to have this other uh entity come in or person come in locally was because they had actually researched funding sources too, which I thought was remarkable. But I don't understand it, you know, I'm not familiar with any of it. So, all right, I'll, I'll work on that.
Perfect, absolutely.
All right, thanks.
I don't know if the uh town got an invitation or not, but Christiana Care um Union Hospital is supposed to unveil a exterior sign tomorrow at 11:00 AM. Did anyone get that?
I don't see it.
I did not see it.
And it says, celebrating with us, Christiana Care Union Hospital extends a warm invitation for you to join us Thursday, July 15, 2021 at 11:00 AM outside the hospital main entrance on High Street. We will be unveiling our new exterior building sign, refreshments, colonized, and that's, and that's what I got.
Why don't you get that?
I was talking to a passenger yesterday, he said, I'll see you up to whatever. I said, see you up to whatever, what do you thought? Never saw him say this. And I'm saying, I'm glad surprised to be a partner in the family, nothing.
Yeah.
Very much so.
Never received it.
Can you forward back to me?
I'll be glad to. Okay.
Yeah, and just real quick, who go on? Will you go, will you attend? And that way I can just go ahead and reach out to Union and say that we.
I should be able to make.
I, I should be there just for them to unveil the sign, I shouldn't take that off.
Okay, Kim. Yeah, I think we have a couple, I'm not sure.
I might be babysitting in northeast where I don't know.
Oh, very good. Well, very good. Uh anyone have anything else for the good of the town during this workshop?
Let me, okay, I'm unmuted. Uh I just, after listening to Singly, I feel kind of petty asking for this, but uh up landing is in desperate need of a treasurer. Our treasurer does not want to do the job and we really need to have someone that is interested in doing the job and is capable of doing it so that we can make sure that we're always in good standing with the state of Maryland and just a few other reports that need to be generated. and just a few other reports that need to be generated, plus a monthly treasurer's report. We don't get that now. So sometimes we're just flying blind.
But you know, as, as you think about that, a lot of organizations sometime being a treasurer is a volunteer position and it encompasses a, 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 a lot of time, you know, that among others should be a big position. I know I was treasurer for the, well, NAACP was church and this thing was, but, you know, this is just like this. A volunteer position, what you wanna entail, sometime need to be a paid, uh, position, but that's just my thinking. I understand what you're saying, saying as well.
Well, I'll keep my eyes and nose, your, uh, eyes and ears, eyes and ears open.
Okay, we would, we would really appreciate that.
Thank you.
And my last thing, Louis, how's your wife doing?
I'm sorry.
How's the boss doing?
Um, she's on the trail to recovery, but she's not out of the woods yet.
Okay. Very good. Well, we're here for you.
Thank you.
All right, this meeting's adjourned.